Chris, can you take one?
Yep. Mark.
Here.
Becky?
I'm here.
Krista?
Here.
Richard?
Yep.
Eric?
Here.
Cheryl?
Here.
Oscar?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, and anything, anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Not, uh, entertaining motion to approve the agenda?
I second.
I second. I second.
Uh, motion by Oscar, second by Eric to approve the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh... You got introductions? Was your mark?
Yeah, uh, two members, we've got a full board for the first time I've seen in three years going on. Um, Becky Elder and Cheryl Hobson, welcome to the planning commission. Glad, uh, glad we have seats filled and we look forward to having a long night tonight.
Hmm?
Well.
Alright, yeah, welcome. Uh, approval of minutes from November.
Yep.
Yeah, November.
I second.
I second.
Motion by Oscar and second by Eric to approve the minutes, as we recall, twenty twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now I'll call agenda item seven A, the public hearing for case number CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, a request for a conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling in the A-one agricultural district. Uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda? Uh, let the record show there are no extensions. We have a quorum of seven. Uh, planning commissions are required to report the general nature of any verbal or written expertise communications received prior to the meeting. However, it is not necessary to disclose the names of the parties. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report expertise communications? Here and none, let the record show that no expertise communications have been reported. The secretary has reported that a notice for this hearing was published in Art Valley News on twelve nineteen twenty twenty-four, which at least twenty days advanced notice has required. The property owner and surrounding property owners were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare that notification permits have been satisfied for this public hearing. I'll now ask Dustin Felton to present a brief case report and recommendations.
Alright, thank you. CU twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, Ashley Bauer. Uh, the applicant, ooh, left that in there, okay. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to build an accessory dwelling. The property is generally located six hundred forty feet south of Ninety-Eight Street North on the west side of Hydrolic or Ninety-seven Thirty-Seven North Hydrolic Avenue in a zoned A-one agricultural use. The property is unplatted and developed with a single-family residence and an oversized detached garage. The applicant wants to rebuild the accessory dwelling to allow her parents to live on the property with her. Accessory dwelling is defined in the Kechai zoning regulations as an accessory residential unit that is detached from the primary structure on a parcel. Five four of the Kechai zoning regulations states accessory apartment or dwelling, a residential unit that is accessory to a single-family residential primary use on the same lot. An accessory apartment is constructed inside or attached to the primary structure or a secondary structure. An accessory dwelling exists independently and is detached from all other structures. Specific use standards of the Kechai zoning regulations state shall be limited to one such structure per lot and allowed only in conjunction with detached, single-family residential primary structures, shall be compatible with immediate neighborhood and constructed with the same or equal siding exterior materials as the principal structure, shall be limited to, limited in size to fifty percent of the principal structure's gross floor area, shall be subject to the applicable lot coverage setback and off-street parking requirements. Accessory apartments or dwellings may be rented as independent residential unit and may be served by an independent utility connection, subject to applicable City of Kechai building codes. Two, shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Guest homes and pool houses shall not be utilized on a permanent basis as sleeping or living quarters. Accessory dwellings are allowed in A-one agricultural district by approved conditional uses only. Uh, case history, the property has not been platted and there have been no zoning actions on this property. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north, south, east, and west are A-one and all developed with single-family residential use. Hydrolic Avenue is a two-lane paved local road with open ditches. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. The future development plan map from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for housing. The proposed accessory dwelling will be a secondary use to the residence. The goal of the plan is to provide quality and context-sensitive aesthetics in development and redevelopment. The proposed design will be required by the specific use standards to have exterior siding of a color and visual appearance similar to the principal structure. This will help ensure that the accessory dwelling has context-sensitive aesthetics. Uh, based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. The accessory dwelling shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of a COO. The accessory dwelling must comply with specific use standards of section ten point three seven of the Kechai zoning regulations. Only one family may live in the accessory dwelling at a time. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the ZA, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, all surrounding properties northeast, south, and west of the subject property are zoned A-one agricultural district and developed with single-family homes. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed accessory dwelling. Four, the subject site is currently zoned A-one agricultural district, which permits an accessory dwelling by conditional use. Five, the property is developed with a single-family residence and is not vacant. Six, staff does not see an issue with A-one agricultural district with an accessory dwelling on the property. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. The conditions of approval should minimize any potential detrimental impacts. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Attachments, we have an aerial map showing where the proposed house will be going. Zoning map, this green color is agricultural or A-one and it is surrounded by A-one. Uh, future development plan map from Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan shows the approximate location of the area, which is good for housing. Site plan, I will zoom in here on the next page here really quick. They have an existing building here. This is the existing house here, it's about three thousand square feet. The proposed manufactured home that is planned to go here is going to be about fifteen hundred square feet, so about fifty percent of the existing house. There's already an existing garage placed here. At one point in time, there was another building here and I believe it was torn down between, off the top of my head, I want to say twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. I could be wrong on that. And site photos, subject property facing west, east, south, and north. Do any of you have any questions for me at this time?
Thank you Dustin. I'll now ask the applicant to step to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Step through here. Right here. Okay, I... Is applicant, applicant's kind? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Do you have anybody?
No.
Does anybody wish to come to the podium and state? Have any problems with what we got? And Dustin, you said nobody has written, no verbal or written communications?
None whatsoever.
Any final comments or will be closing the public hearing here? Okay, I will... Does anybody have any question? Nope. I will hereby close the public hearing. So, we usually, you know, you dip go into deliberations for, and Dustin's filled out what the city thinks on those items. Does anybody have anything to add? Put in the record? Any other, no questions or anything? Nothing?
No.
Well, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the planning commission adopt the findings and recommendations as stated in the zoning administrator's report for case CU twenty twenty-four dash oh seven and forward the recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the requested conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling in the A-one agricultural district.
Thank you Mark, uh, have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Mark made a motion to, uh, adopt the findings and recommendations and forward to zoning body and seconded by Krista. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, you may.
Richard, are you gonna vote or is it six to oh?
What's that?
Are you voting or is it six to oh?
Oh, no, it's six to oh.
Okay.
Okay, I now call agenda item seven B, public hearing for case number CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, a request for a conditional use to allow oversized detached garage in C-one Arts and Business District. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on the agenda? Let the record show there are no extensions, we have a quorum of seven present for the public hearing. Uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to report expertise communications? Let the record show that no expertise communications have been reported. The secretary has reported that a notice for this hearing was published in Art Valley News on twelve nineteen twenty twenty-four, which at least twenty days advanced notice has required. The property owner and surrounding property owners were all notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare that notification permits have been satisfied for the public hearing. I'll now ask Dustin Felton to give a brief case report and recommendation.
Alright, CU twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, the applicant is Laurie Burke. Uh, the applicant is requesting a CU to construct a detached garage that exceeds maximum gross floor area, nine hundred and sixty square feet for properties over ten thousand square feet, but not more than three acres. The property is generally located a hundred and sixty-four feet north of Kechai Road on the east side of Oliver or sixty-two twenty-two North Oliver and is zoned C-one Arts and Business District. The property is not platted and adjacent to the applicant's lot that is developed with a single-family residence. The applicant lives at one thirty-four North Oliver and plans on the garage being at sixty-two twenty-two North Oliver, which is directly south and adjacent. Both lots are zoned as C-one Arts and Business District. See above picture and aerial photo below for more details. This here is where the applicant lives. This is where the proposed garage will be going. Detached residential carports or garages is defined in the Kechai zoning regulations as a structure considered either a carport or garage is defined in section three point zero three that is unattached to a principal residential structure. Kechai zoning regulations, section three point zero three defines a garage as a covered and enclosed accessory structure that provides direct access to driveway or parking space which is intended solely for storage of motor vehicles owned by residents of the primary structure. A garage may be attached to or detached from a primary residential structure. The applicant is planning on the garage to be about thirty by forty feet or twelve hundred square feet, which is two hundred and forty square feet over the maximum permitted by section ten point three one of the zoning regulations. Kechai zoning regulations state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be as follows, lots over ten thousand square feet in area, but not more than three acres. Garages, nine hundred sixty square feet. Approval of this request would allow the applicant to construct the garage as proposed. Zoning lot is defined in the Kechai zoning regulations as a contiguous area of property on one or more lots of record having the same owner, the entire area of which is within the same zoning district, where a single lot of record has portions within different zoning districts. Each portion within a different zoning district is considered an individual zoning lot. Case history, the subject property was developed in nineteen twenty. In twenty twenty-four, the applicant demolished the buildings that were on the property. There have been no zoning actions on this property. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north is C-one, single-family residential and commercial. To the south, east, and west are zoned and developed as commercial, C-one. Public services, Oliver Street is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Context-sensitive developments help preserve and enhance both the function and aesthetics of adjacent features. See recommendation number two below. Recommendations. Based upon information prior to public, prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved, subject to the following conditions. The applicant and/or contractor shall submit a voting permit and provide engineered design plans. The detached residential garage must comply with specific use standards of section ten point three one. The driveway of the detached garage shall be graded for appropriate drainage and surfaced with asphalt, concrete, comparable hard pavement, or constructed and maintained with a dust-free gravel aggregate or rock surface. I apologize, the rock surface is... not supposed to be in there. The oversized detached garage shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure, located at one thirty-four North Oliver Street. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. If the ZA finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the CU, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. The properties to the northeast, south, and west are zoned as C-one Arts and Business District and developed with commercial businesses. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff does not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage. Four, the subject site is currently zoned C-one Arts and Business District, which permits a detached garage that exceeds the maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. The properties are approximately twenty-nine thousand four hundred one square feet and have a maximum lot coverage of one hundred percent, minus applicable yard and off-street parking requirements, more than twenty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet. The primary residence and proposed garage will have an approximate combined lot coverage of eleven point three three percent. Uh, five, the property is not vacant. It was developed with a single-family residence in nineteen ten. Six, staff does not see an issue with C-one district use with an oversized garage being adjacent to other C-one commercial use. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on surrounding properties. Eight, approval of, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. No input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Aerial map, again showing, uh, the applicant's residence and where the garage is going to be going on the adjacent lot at sixty-two twenty-two North Oliver. Zoning map, all the light pink is C-one. Future development plan map shows that the area is good for Arts and Business District, pointing to that area there for the approximate location. Uh, site plan, bigger one here. There's going to be at least five feet, uh, between the property line on the south side to the south side of the, uh, proposed garage. Doors and window locations to be, uh, determined. I believe I did get a updated, uh, map. It is not a part of the staff report, but not a lot has changed upon it. And site photos, uh, north of the subject property, we see the applicant's house. Subject property facing east, it's obviously an older picture. Both of these here have been demolished. South of the subject property, again, C-one business. And across the street, car. Or more commercial. Does the planning commission have any questions for me?
Thank you Dustin.
Thank you.
Uh, we now ask the applicant to step to the podium and state their name and address.
Oh, I'll put the fire on, I was getting a cold go there.
Okay. Let me get out of your way.
Good evening, my name's Laurie Burke, I'm the property owner of six, uh, six-two twenty-six North Oliver in Kechai. And the property I'm interested in is, isn't it there? Is to, now let me give you a little bit of history. The property at sixty-two twenty-two North Oliver was the home of Fred and Ruby Howard and their two sons, Jerry and Gary. Ruby cared for the home and also raised her two sons there. Raised apart in raising his two sons as well as owning and operating the CB radio sales service. Howard's CB was a service. Stored, had the small concrete block building attached to the residence. This business was one of the first businesses in Kechai. Ever since the mid-twentieth century and a true land, Kechai landmark throughout Kansas. I mean, truck drivers from all over the state would come in and get your trucks worked on, CB radios. Fred retired some years ago and when he retired, he turned the property over to his son Jerry to operate the business. Well, shortly after he turned it over to his son, Fred developed brain cancer and passed away. Ruby, his wife, decided it would be better for her to move into Wichita and live with her son Gary. So that left the house vacant. Jerry approached me several years ago, my time flies, this is probably about twenty years ago, and asked if I would be interested in buying the property. And I informed him, yes, my wife would like to buy the property so she would know who her neighbors were. And so my wife and I decided to buy the property. The intent was to know where the neighbors were and maybe remodel it and be, and use for rental property sometime in the future. We wanted to, we wanted to rent the garage area for a short time to my son Kenneth, who used it to build up his now very successful mobile welding service, which is now where the old fire station and part city. We, we had thoughts of remodeling the property. The time, finances, and the deterioration of the building prevented us of doing so. The roof started leaking, was unable to control it. Mold was starting to ravage the residence portion of the house. Floors and walls were becoming unstable. Roads turned the house into their own Holiday Inn Express. And the overall condition was deemed by me to be unsanitary and unsafe, which went to cost of rehabilitation was not feasible. The only, the only use we were getting from the building at the time was a small area we used for storage and a smaller area I used for workshop. The last summer during our high winds we had, we had a cedar tree that came down between the... Can we bring that picture back up to the front of the building?
I can do that, just for you.
Just for me. I had that right there, good. During the summer, some high winds came about and that one cedar tree that Fred almost did center the building, a portion of it broke off and came crashing down on the house. About a week later, another windstorm came through and I'll be damned if another man didn't come crashing down and hit on the exact same spot. That was the straw that broke the camel's back. Because of that repair and since the building was not insured, I did not, didn't have money to repair it, so I decided to have it razed. And raising it, you know, sure, I got a big old concrete slab out there, but having it gone now has already impacted the appearance of the neighborhood. Approval of this request will enable me to construct a more pleasant and visually appealing structure to the area where there wasn't any in the past. This building will be used primarily for vehicle parking during inclement weather, yard maintenance equipment, storage, and a... yard maintenance equipment, storage, and a small hobby workshop for myself. My wishes that the Planning Commission will approve and request a conditional use. Thank you. I might add that by, I am planning on applying for the, some of the NRP, Neighborhood Revitalization Program, tax abatements for the help of reconstructing this and bringing this building up to fruition. Thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Explain, explain the NRP to me.
I'll leave that up to Jim. Or leave that up to him. Neighbor, okay, I'll do the best I can. He can do it.
Yeah.
He's here, he can do it.
So the NRP is a neighborhood revitalization program that the city council just passed, the last city council meeting. What it does, it's kind of an incentive for property owners to improve their properties. That's what it was originally designed for. It's taken many forms over the years, and we are using it here locally to help stimulate residential and commercial growth, okay? Part of the program fits what Mr. Burke wants to do and helps with revitalizing properties. So what it does is it provides a tax abatement for the increase in assessed property valuation for the improvements that are made. So if your property is worth $100,000 today, and you make improvements on it, and now it becomes worth $200,000, that portion, that increased portion is abated for a certain period of time for that property.
For Kichai or for Central County?
Well, for Kichai, and we ask other taxing jurisdictions to join in, so that'll be the Wichita School District, Ballet Center School District, wherever those fall within the city, the Fire District, Central County, anybody who levies a property tax within Kichai, they will be asked to join that as well. It's totally up to them. Historically, they do not oppose it, and they join, so it gives residents here the opportunity to have that full tax abatement for all taxing entities.
And number of years is determined by the tax abatement, number of years?
Right. And I can get you a copy of that plan. So there's a different formula for residential, a different formula for commercial, and a formula for new construction and remodeling.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Pulled me out of it.
I just got one question, and that's on the sign.
Yeah.
What was the intention on the sign?
You want it?
No, I just was wondering.
My nephew's buying it.
Really?
The CB sign. Yeah, Tommy Jacobs asked, my nephew's name is Chad Blair, so I think we are paying somebody to take it.
Oh, okay. I hope, this is for, this is new to me.
Take it, yeah. Maybe you and I should talk to Tommy.
Okay, all right. Yeah. You want the sign and the whole, or just?
No.
Just the sign.
I'm about to get a cherry picker to get it, but we'll, that was long discussed.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions?
I'd be glad to get rid of it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I will now open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this agenda? And there was no public comments, right? Did you say that?
None.
None, okay. All righty, then, hearing, no public comments, so hereby close the public hearing. Does anybody have anything to add to Dustin's assessment of the buildings? Then I will open it for a motion. Any wish to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, and you just, just read the statement. It's got some canned.
Read the statement.
Yeah, like under number one, it's easy sample.
Start with one and go through five?
No, just do one.
Well, okay. Approved per zoning administrative recommendation. I move that the Planning Commission adopt findings and recommendations stated in the zoning administrative report, if this what you did, for case number CU 2024-07, and forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the requested conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling in the A1 Agricultural District. Am I reading the right?
You're on the wrong one.
I'm not reading the right one. I had the wrong case number? No?
Yeah, that's the wrong paper.
That's the wrong paper. It sure looks like the same case number.
There's lots of paper in this house.
Okay, I'm going to start with the zoning administrative report for case, am I doing it right?
Yes.
CU 2024-08, there's the difference, and forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the requested conditional use to allow an oversized garage in the C1 Arts and.
A recommendation, a written summary of the public hearing, 213 2025 meeting, to be held at 7:00 PM in this room. I now call agenda item 7C, Public Hearing for Case Number CU-2024-09, a request for conditional use to allow in addition to an already existing oversized storage shed or structure in A1 Agricultural District. Does any member of the Planning Commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda? Let the.